This time I call the March meeting of the County Commission to order. We have with us tonight Ms. Naomi Cobb of the New Tabernacle Baptist Church. And she's also heads up the Lincoln County Food Pantry along with others, but she keeps it running. Just told me they served 170 something today, Ms. Naomi? 157 went through today. Ms. Cobb, if you'll come to the podium, you'll leave us in the invocation. Commissioner Henderson will leave us in the pledge and leave us in the flag.
Good evening to the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners. We're going to go to the Throne of Grace from prayer. There are two scriptures I want to cite before we go to the Throne of Grace. James 1:5 says, "If any of you lacks wisdom, let him ask." And Galatians 5:1 says, "Pray for elected officials." So that's what we're here to do this evening. Let's go to the Throne of Grace. Most gracious and heavenly Father, as we gather here on this Thursday evening, March the 13th of 2025, God, we're going to pause first of all just to say thank you. You've watched over each and every one of us all day and all night and take us up and down the dangerous highways, and we just want to say thank you. Now, Lord, as they enter into this meeting, as I looked over the agenda, God, everyone here is working on one accord for the betterment of Lincoln County. So, God, we lift up every organization that's represented here this evening. God, we ask that you let their meetings be done decent and in order. Lord, we ask that Lincoln County be glorified and that we remember all of our children. We don't ever like to close a prayer without remembering our children because they are our future. So, God, we remember our children and we thank you for this meeting that's going to be done well. And I will close this prayer with the nine fruits of the Spirit that comes from Galatians 5:22-23. And these nine fruits will be left here in the chamber as I leave and as they leave to return home. They are love, joy, peace, patience, goodness, gentleness, kindness, faithfulness, and self-control. We thank you and we praise you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Laid a nation to the life of the United States of America. It's a republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioner Clyde is in Houston, Texas, on a trip that he planned several months ago, and he's not here. All the other commissioners are here. Item four on our agenda is the approval of the minutes of the previous meetings. Is there a motion that we approve the minutes?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second, Mr. Chairman. Motion by Commissioner Antonakis, second by Commissioner Henderson in discussion. Chair is none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known was saying aye. All opposed, like sign, motion is carried. Item five is the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion that we approve the agenda as printed?
Slow move, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Tankersley, second by Commissioner Antonakis, in discussion on the motion. Chair is none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known was saying aye. All opposed, like sign, motion is carried. Item six is the departmental reports. Six A is the Office of Emergency Services Director Broom.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. You have my submitted reports, and I'll take any question.
Any questions? I'm sure you've looked at your reports, and I see the ambulance services pretty busy. The fire department has been too.
Yes, we've been very busy for the last three to four weeks, actually. Both fire and the area.
Any questions, Director Broom? If not, thank you. Six B is Recreation. Director Blais is at the Recreation Complex. As we speak, and I just looked at the camera, and there's a lot of people at the Recreation Complex right now. He did say his report, and you have it though, that the Saturday, March 15th, after the All-Star Game with McComick, South Carolina, we had a March Madness was played, and we were winning our annual March Madness tournament against our rivalry, Washington Wilkes. And I guess that was good, that's highlighted. He also stated that the baseball, softball, and T-ball in Georgia Parks and Recreation at Recreation Complex is scheduled to begin on March 29th, if weather permits. And he also said that we've had the largest enrollment ever, which increases now every year, but we have 275 kids in that program out there this summer. And he had to cut it off because of ordering stuff, so he said he knew it probably would have been at least five or six more that would have been in. We hope by next year we'll hit 300 out there. We're over 300 when soccer season starts. And the Eddie Fletcher Park along with the Splash Pad will be opening April 1st. If you have any questions, Director Blais, you can contact him. Six C is Finance, Director Doss.
Chairman and Commissioners, we have our printed reports as are reported at our work session. We have started our budget process. I've been getting them in from our department heads, and I'll be aggregating those and getting them to the chairman the next week. If there's nothing else, Chairman, I'll read our cash report.
Any questions, Director Doss?
Proceed. Our cash and cash equivalent report, month ending February 2025, general fund account eight million, excuse me, general fund account 2,800,000, ah, I can't read tonight, 200,800, Our SPOLOST 7 Fund, 2,401,006. Our Transportation SPOLOST Fund, 1,647,708. Our Solid Waste Fund, 1,31,690. The American Rescue Plan Fund, 347,944. Our Emergency Fund, 311,633. And our Water Reserve Fund, 243,097. Those are our major funds. We have many other funds than that. The total of all of our funds is 9,396,908. We have 2,161,399 in our Raymond James Investment Account. And the total cash and cash equivalent of all of our accounts at the end of February was 11,558,246.
Any questions, Director Doss, on the financing? He will be giving us an update and a report next month on the cleanup cost and all of Hurricane Helene. And hopefully, we, I don't know if we'll ever know when we're going to get our money back, but we have to front it. So he'll give us a report on that. It's going to be somewhere just under 3 million probably. But he'll give us a report on all that, hopefully it'll be wrapped up, and he'll tell us all about that. So if you have any questions, you can ask him. Six D is Public Works, Director Seymour.
Chairman members of the board, you have my written reports. I don't have anything to add to those unless you have questions I'd be more than happy to answer for you, Chairman.
Any questions? I do want to comment, I do this about every month, somewhere during the agenda process, that we're going to move pretty quickly tonight. Every item on this agenda came before the Commissioners' work session last Thursday. And that's where it's really discussed and talked about, put on the agenda for approval. So we're going through it fast, but it's already been discussed with the department heads and different ones that work with us. So we'll move this along right quick. We do have with us though tonight on the John and Diana Dooley Monument, Mr. Bill Tankersley, who is the, I guess, Senior Vice President of the Sons of the American Revolution. You were president up until last year, wasn't you? I guess you rotated off. Bill has done an excellent job with the Sons of the American Revolution. And they meet in Lincoln County, I think, about monthly, don't you? Over the historical part, and it's not just Lincoln County, it covers an area, I think, MacDuffie and Columbia and several counties in, but they usually meet here. Mr. Don Thomas is, I think, U-President of the Historical Society now, and of course, an active member of the Sons of American Revolution, along with Mac Shealy and his wife, and Mr. Thomas's wife. Bill, he left his, or she left him maybe, but anyway. Mac is very active in both the Lincoln County Historical Society and the Sons of American One thing they do every year that I enjoy, and I've been every year since I've been back, I think, I made my eighth one, looking forward to the ninth one, I made my ninth. Every year in February, they have Elijah Clark Day at State Park. And they come from all over several states here for that, and it continued on through the weekend at Kettle Creek, about the grounds of Wilkes County. But I guess, what is it, 150 or so people that participate in that? Now, it's a big turnout. In fact, I'm going to get Johnny, I want Johnny to bring the camera back down there and film that thing, put it on all YouTube. It's an impressive deal, but it brings a lot of people, and I think it's somewhere around 200,000 people that visit Elijah Clark State Park every year, too, that brings people into the county for tourism and this type of thing. Mr. Tankersley approached me, I guess a month, four or five weeks ago, about maybe the county being able to contribute, be able to help with erecting a monument in honor and memory of John and Dooley and his wife that will be placed inside, I think, of the Rhode Island fence where General Elijah Clark is buried. And I thought it would be good if the county did, and of course, the County Commissioners did too. We want to support that because everything we do to bring people in Lincoln County, they go back and tell people they've been in Lincoln, and they spend a little money here hopefully, and it just makes a trickle effect. But Bill, do you have anything you want to say? If you do, you can come to this podium, I'll give you a few minutes to talk about the Sons of the American Revolution and the Lincoln County Historical Society, which we're proud of both.
Thank you. So those of you that know a little bit about history, you might remember that Colonel John Dooley was Elijah Clark's commanding officer. And they both lived here in what is now Lincoln County, was Wilkes County prior to 1796. So Colonel Dooley and his wife do not have any kind of gravestone or monument like the Clarks do. So that was the reason why we wanted to do something to honor him, and kind of felt like they had been overlooked, that. So we just really appreciate Chairman Norman and the rest of the Commissioners being willing to donate to that. And it really honors our patriot ancestors or our forefathers that gave us the freedoms and all that we enjoy today, gave us the wonderful country that we have.
And I think I told, I shared this in the sketch of the monument and all last week at work session, they have copies of that. But Colonel Dooley, prior to Lincoln County being existence since 1796, was sheriff of Wilkes County, which he included, so he was in the boundaries of Lincoln County at that time. Anybody have any questions from Mr. Tankersley? If not, I'm going to entertain a motion that we approve to help erect this monument of Elijah Clark State Park in Lincoln County, $2,500.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Have a motion, is that second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Antonakis, second by Commissioner Henderson in discussion. Chair is none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known was saying aye. All opposed, like sign, the motion is carried. I guess we got your address some way, if not, leave it with the clerk?
Well, Mac is our treasurer, so we'll leave it to him. Yes, sir.
Well, we see Anna all the time, so we can give her the hug if you don't want to ride town, but they'll have to print this probably next week before it goes through the system. And for the record, this goes, this will be paid off by hotel motel tax. So we will have that for you, and I will go through the process, you know, go with slow.
Thank you so much, we really appreciate it.
And with Helena, we might get slower. Thank y'all. And if y'all want to stay, I know y'all, Lincoln County folks over there, y'all welcome to stay. It's not going to take too long, you can see what we do a little bit. Thank you though for coming. Item eight is the Georgia Humanities Grant Director Party.
Chairman Commissioners, I've come to ask for approval to apply for the grant from Georgia Humanities in the amount of $2,500. It is a one-to-one match donation, we would be using N-CAD sources.
Okay, we heard this, is there a motion to approve applying for the grant?
Slow move, Mr. Chairman.
The second?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Tankersley, second by Commissioner Antonakis, in discussion on the motion. Chair is none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known was saying aye. All opposed, like sign, motion is carried. Thank you, and you're welcome to leave, even though you did tell me not to let you go. Item nine is the Donate Life Proclamation. Ask clerk to read the proclamation.
Yes, sir. National Donate Life Month Proclamation, Lincoln County, Georgia Board of Commissioners. Whereas, one of the most meaningful gifts that a human being can bestow upon another is the gift of life. And whereas more than 100,000 men, women, and children await life-saving or life-enhancing organ transplants, of which nearly 3,000 reside in Georgia.
Clerk McKell?
Yes, sir.
Without objection, I'd like to suspend the reading of the proclamation.
Yes, sir.
We can place it in, it'll be in our minute books, and we have the proclamation signed. They said somebody might be here, you know, you'll make it mail. Okay, we're going to suspend the reading, no objections, is there a motion to approve?
Standby, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Antonakis, second by Commissioner Henderson, in discussion on the motion. Chair is none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known was saying aye. All opposed, like sign, motion is carried. Item 10, Alcoholics Beverage Section 10-65 Text Change, Clerk McKell.
Yes, sir. This text change is to add an applicant acquiring a business, a local business license before receiving an alcohol license.
Okay, you see it in the reading. Item two, we discussed this last week, is there a motion to approve the text change?
Slow move, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Tankersley, second by Commissioner Antonakis, in discussion on the motion. Chair is none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known was saying aye. All opposed, like sign, motion is carried. Item 11 is Georgia EMS Association Training Grant Director Broom.
Chairman and Commissioners, in 2024, we received a grant from the Georgia EMS Association to assist in the delivery of an EMT program. That program has been completed, and we have been awarded $2,500 to help offset the cost of instructors for that course. Tonight, I'm asking that there be a motion to receive those funds from GAEEMF.
Is there a motion to approve the grant?
Slow move, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Henderson, second by Commissioner Tankersley, that we accept the $2,500 to help with the school of EMTs. Is there any discussion on the motion? Chair is none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known was saying aye. All opposed, like sign, motion is carried. Item 12, Travel Expense Reimbursement Rate, Director Doss.
Chairman and Commissioners, we're asking the board to approve an amendment to our Personnel Policy 512, Business Travel Expenses. Our current policy does not specify how we will change our mileage rate, and we want to add the following two sentences to it. Mileage cost will re, the mileage cost will be reimbursed at the mileage rate set by the state accounting office for the period of travel. The mileage reimbursement, the mileage reimbursement rate is generally adjusted every January. Chairman, that'll allow my office to adjust our expense report when the mileage rate changes set by the state of Georgia.
And that's really to keep us from having to come back and approve it every time it's changed, and the state follows, I think, federal.
The state follows a federal, this just allows us to change it when it changes, Chairman.
We've discussed it. Motion to approve the request, Director?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Antonakis, second by Commissioner Henderson, in discussion on the motion. Chair is none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known was saying aye. All opposed, like sign, motion is carried. Item 13, the RFP 24 Budget Amendments, Director Doss.
Chairman and Commissioners, as we discussed, our RFP 24 budget has closed, and we did end the year with a fund balance. Our auditors are recommending that we make some amendments to our final budget numbers for each of our line items in our general fund. And the original budget was 7,313,116. They're recommending that we make $272,600 in positive adjustments with the final budget for the general fund of 7,585,716. Chairman, unless you ask me to read all of the line items, I will just ask the board to adopt that change.
Any objection, not the reading of the document? Chair is none. Without motion, we accept the recommendation and approve the amendments asked brought to us.
Slow move, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Tankersley, second by Commissioner Antonakis, in discussion on the motion. Chair is none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known was saying aye. All opposed, like sign, motion is carried.
Chairman, we have our Other Funds Budget, which is, consists of approximately a dozen other funds that we have. The auditors are also recommending that we make some adjustments to that fund. The original Other Funds Balance was, original budget was 5,752,091. They're recommending that we make 538,302 in positive adjustments, so the final budget for the Other Funds Budget would be 6,290,393. Chairman, we're asking that you make that change, or the board make that change.
Is there a motion that we accept the recommendation, Finance Director make the change?
Standby, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Antonakis, second by Commissioner Henderson, in discussion on the motion. Chair is none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known was saying aye. All opposed, like sign, motion is carried. Item 14, our RFP 25-003 Debris Monitoring, Director Doss.
Chairman and Commissioners, as we discussed, we had to put out a standby contract for debris monitoring. Because we used exigent contracting for our storm, we put out an RFP, we received two responses. We graded that, and we're asking the board to issue a contract with a company called Debris Tech for debris monitoring. It's a zero-cost contract to us until we activate it in the event that we have another tornado or hurricane or something come through Lincoln County and we need to do debris cleaning.
Okay, we've, we've discussed this a good bit, for those that are sitting here, those that'll be listening, this is, what we're doing is trying to get ahead of this. If nothing like this has ever happened, I hope it never does. It doesn't cost us anything, but we are contracting with these two companies. We have to have two monitoring cleanup people. This will be the monitoring company, which is different from the monitoring company we had this year. It's no cost to us, but we already contracted with them in case we have something to happen, they can come right on in. We were fortunate this time that we got it done as quickly as we did without a contract. This is nothing, it's new for Lincoln County, but Columbia and Richmond and MacDuffie and all these do this anyway, but we thought it would be best for us to be prepared in case something happened again. Is there any, not any discussions, is there a motion that we accept the recommendation and award it to Debris Tech LLC? Need a motion?
Standby, Mr. Chairman.
Have a motion, is that second? Motion by Commissioner Antonakis, second by Commissioner Henderson, in discussion on the motion. Chair is none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known was saying aye. All opposed, like sign, motion is carried. Item 14, our RFP 25-04 Debris Removal Director, Doss.
Chairman, this is a companion contract to the debris monitoring that we just discussed. We also let an RFP out for debris monitoring services. We had six responses, we graded those. Sears Environmental, who is our current contractor, who was our current contractor, was the low bid on that, was the most responsive bidder on that project. We are also asking the Board of Commissioners to issue a standby contract for Sears for debris removal in the event we have another federal decolor, declaration. I'm sorry, I cannot speak tonight, Chairman.
We might test you tomorrow. Director Doss is not pleased that these people, once they come in, well, I guess I got to go with you tomorrow, I thought. Of what it was going to be, but these are the same, these are the same people that we use this, this time with Sears.
Yes, sir, it just works out.
Oh, I know what I was going to say, they already FEMA approved, FEMA and GMA approved. So if it happens, they already approved to go to work, we don't have to go through a process of getting them approved, too.
That is correct.
Is there a motion that we accept the recommendation and contract with Sears Environmental?
Slow move, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Tankersley, second by Commissioner Antonakis, in discussion on the motion. Chair is none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known was saying aye. All opposed, like sign, motion is carried. Item number 15, number 16, this core lease renewal, Cherokee Day Use, Director Seymour.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. This is just a recap of our-
Did it come in?
It has not, no, sir. We're still waiting, so we can move past it and the next one, Mr. Chairman, the both. We are month to month on both of those.
I'll ask the clerk if she'll take Agenda Item 16 and Agenda Item 17. It will be tabled tonight and put on the next month's agenda, the April agenda, hopefully we'll have it back by then, and we know we are month to month until we get the contract. Is there a motion that we tabled it next month?
Slow move, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Tankersley, second by Commissioner Henderson, in discussion. Chair is none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known was saying aye. All opposed, like sign, and the motion is carried. Item number 18 is the Contract for Services on Goldman Johnson Road and McGill Road. This took up about 45 minutes the other day, so let's make it quick.
Yes, sir. We let an RFQ on these two projects. These are TIA projects, and our, in our TIA, we are the local administrator of those projects, so we let RFQ Cranston Engineering out of Augusta score the highest on the RFQ. We did submit their budget to GDOT, got it approved, and so now we need to have the board approve the chairman to sign the contract with Cranston Engineering for the preliminary engineering and construction of those two roads.
Okay, this one is with-
Cranston Engineering.
Cranston Engineering out of Augusta. Is there a motion that we approve?
Slow move, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Tankersley, second by Commissioner Henderson, in discussion. Okay, for those that are watching, we are going to draw our TIA Money Transportation Investment Act, what people vote on, they're going to be voting on it again in about eight years. I want you to know where this money goes and what it's doing, but this will be, for the first time in quite a while, we have actually taken a dirt road and make, turned it to a paved road. Those two roads are going to be Goldman Johnson and McGill Road. That will be done through the 75% of here money. We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Here none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known was saying aye. All opposed, like sign, and the motion is carried. The next item is Item 19, Street Lighting at the Roundabout on 47 and 220, Director Seymour.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. There's also another project in that TIA, which is the Roundabout at Clats Crossing. GDOT has asked for this county, this board, to commit to paying for the street lighting for that roundabout, not the construction cost of it, but the monthly bill that would come in after it's constructed. That cost is going to be about $100 a month, 12,000, I mean, $1,200 a year, and they're asking that we provide them with a letter that, of support in that favor, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we discussed this last week. That's a $4 million project, funded through your TSHFL, DOT, don't come through county funds. The let date on this is supposed to be, I think, January of '26, and sometime in later '26. Hopefully, construction will begin on this project. We've agreed to pay this amount, it's about, it's going to be a little less money, hopefully. We're going to use approximates on all of it, we don't know what the light bills are going to be, but we're agreeing to pay the light bill- the light bill on a four million dollar project. Got to have it lit up because if you don't, you're going to run down through that and hit the wall, but. I want to add into this too, and it, and they'll be both of them. We discussed this another day and I failed to get it put there, but I got it in my notes. We discussed Ashmore-Borden Road too. For those of you that are coming through, you see some construction work being done on Ashmore-Borden Road. That is totally funded by the Georgia Department of Transportation and how that works is they have a pot of money that the General Assembly appropriates the DOT every year for the state that you have to go to and, and try to get this money. We were successful in getting this money. That's about a half a million dollar project funded by DOT. Lincoln County got one dime in it, for those that are listening. But we also want to light that up. That's going to make a big difference with the traffic flow down there. And it's going to need streetlights on it too. So if it's not an objection, I would like to add Ashmore-Borden Road intersection as well as the Roundabout. So it'll be two included in the motion. Not an objection to that. We discussed this one last week. No objections, is our motion that we approve these two places?
I move, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Anthony Nakas, second by Commissioner Henderson, any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Tankersley?
Uh, streetlights down at Ashmore Forty-seven, will they be funded by the county or are they going to be incorporated through DOT?
No, they'll be funded by the county. They will not pay any electrical bill. Just like it.
I'm talking about the equipment itself. That's what they're doing at the Roundabout. They're, they're punishing the light and installation.
They're not. We, we doing that, but that's no.
Yeah, that would be at no cost. There wouldn't be any equipment cost.
Power company put, put it up for.
Yeah.
Like what if you put a utility in the yard?
Yeah. There would be no upfront cost. It would just be a month of charge of the, of the power bill for that light.
Okay. All in favor of the motion, let it be known, we say an aye. All opposed, like, sign the motions carried. Just a reminder to the Commissioners and to the public county ordinance says that if you don't hear it, if you don't vote no, you automatically voted yes. So if you don't hear, if I don't hear that you're voting no, you voted yes. Next item is Item twenty, is the Waterline Relocation at Crooked Bridge, Director Seymour.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. DOT is, is letting a project to replace the bridge on Highway Two Twenty at Soap Creek, which we call Crooked Bridge. There is a water line that's in conflict with the new design. I believe that the county paid our engineering firm to do a preliminary cost estimate to, to move that line. That cost was about $180,000. So we applied for utility aid through the Georgia Department of Transportation. We had several meetings with them. They dropped it down, I think, the first time to about $80,000 that we would pay out of the $180,000. Then they dropped it down to $54,000 and the final number they came back to us with was $18,037.40. I'm asking that y'all approve the payment of that amount out of TSPLOST. Since it's a road project, we can pay for it out of TSPLOST funds to relocate that water line.
Okay, this, this is Two Twenty Bridge. I think everybody knows what Crooked Bridge is. It's going to be redone. The reason we are having to put anything into it is, is because any utilities that, that State Highway Department allows you to put on them, on it, if they do something different, you have, you have bad expense of moving it back and it don't hold up a state project. For instance, Ashmore-Borden Road, if we had had to relocate the water line, which we was afraid when all this started, we might have to do. We would have had, the county would have had to pay to move the water line for these improvements down there. As it turned out, it didn't hit it. We didn't have to move it. What has happened is, is the state aid has helped us, which means out of this $180,000, the Georgia DOT is paying $162,236.60. And Lincoln County would be paying $18,037.40 of the cost of relocating that water line that's laying under the bottom of Soap Creek. So that's what, that's what we're doing. The recommendation was, is to approve it. And we agreed that, that we would pay for it either out of TSPLOST or ARP money. Director Doss and I have liked to make a recommendation. We paid the $18,037.40 from the American Rescue Plan ARP fund. Is our motion?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Tankersley, second by Commissioner Anthony Nakas, any discussion on the motion? Chair is none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known, we say an aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like, sign the motions carried. Thank you, Director Seymour. Item number twenty-one is the Georgia Forester Corter for Agreement. This is done each and every year. It has 81,450 acres of forested land in Lincoln County. We have to pay 10 cents per acre. That is a state law. If we don't do this, what the result is, is Georgia Forester Commission will not come into Lincoln County to help you fight your forest fire. I think we had eight last month of five or something this, already this month. They won't send their bulldozer to cut around if you don't do this. So basically, we have no choice but to do this. That cost is $8,145. That's, that's done each and every year. It's budgeted in the county's general fund budget. That's where it will be paid for. So I need a motion that we again pay $8,145 to the Georgia Forester Commission by protection of Lincoln County.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Is our second?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Henderson, second by Commissioner Anthony Nakas, any discussion on the motion? You would know that a forester man would be making that motion.
I already wrote it down here, Mr. Chairman, who was going to make the motion and who was going to say it.
Say it again.
Already had it written down.
Oh, you already have it.
Who's going to make the motion?
Any further discussions? All in favor of the motion, let it be known, we say an aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like, sign, and the motion is carried. Item twenty-two is Board Appointments. We discussed this at the work session. I will, I'm going to carry this recommendation on both of them for Commissioner Clyde, but we'll take a motion. He has contacted and he has recommended that we appoint VV Norman Thompson. That's Mary, Mickey Norman's daughter, lives down near Clydes Crossin. To a four-year term to serve on the Library Board. And that term would expire December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-eight. Is our motion, we accept the recommendation?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Tankersley, second by Commissioner Anthony Nakas, any discussion on the motion? Chair is none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known, we say an aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like, sign the motion, carried. Twenty-two P. Tax Assessor Board, the same thing with Commissioner Clyde. He is making a recommendation, and I'm bringing it to you for him, that we appoint Ms. Beth Brigden to the Lincoln County Board of Tax Assessors. Her term will be till the end, December the thirty-first of twenty-twenty-five. She's got a short term. The reason for that is Mr. Troy Ballou was District Three Representative on the Board of Tax Assessors. He resigned at the end of last year. It left a year in his term. So she is filling the unexpired term of Mr. Ballou. She will be eligible in January to be reappointed to serve a full four-year term if she chooses and the commissioner chooses. But tonight, I need a motion to accept the recommendation for Mr. Clyde and Ms. Beth Brigden to the Board of Tax Assessor.
I move, Mr. Chairman.
Our motion is our second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Anthony Nakas, second by Commissioner Henderson, any discussion? Chair is none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known, we say an aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like, sign the motions carried. We have two names to go that is appointed by the Board of Commissioners to the CSRA Central Spanariva Area Unified Development Authority. That has been discussed. We mentioned it last week at our work session. And I need a motion, and I recommend that we appoint Casey Norman. Tell you, all these Normans are not candidates now. They get a little close to Ken every four years. If it gets close to Alexa, but other than that, they're not too close. Verify they're not all my, they're not my children and grandchildren. Well, I ain't got no grandchildren, but anyway. Casey Norman would serve a term of, and they meet in Augusta, where they meet four or five times a year. His term be a four-year term. He'd go through December the thirty-first of twenty-twenty-eight. Is our motion that we appoint Casey Norman to represent Lincoln County on the Unified Development Authority?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Is our second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Tankersley, second by Commissioner Henderson, any discussion? Chair is none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known, we say an aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like, sign the motions carried. The next one is for a two-year term. And that's, and two years later, there'd be a four-year term. They wanted us to stagger the terms of who's on that. So that's why she's being appointed to a two-year term. Plus, that position is normally held by the Director of our Development Authority. Anyway, that is, she's up, previous, she's serving on it now, and that's Christine McNeese. And her term will go, a two-year term will go through December thirty-first of twenty-twenty-six. Is our motion that we reappoint Christine McNeese?
I move, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Anthony Nakas, second by Commissioner Henderson, any discussion on the motion? Chair is none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known, we say an aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like, sign, the motion is carried. I do have a comment. I, I asked y'all last week of the General Government Committee, and I'm going to use these committees on these things to, to work with the telephone. Is that what I did?
Chairman Norman?
Huh?
We need a motion for you to sign the resolution for the UDA.
Okay. All right, we need a separate motion. Did I, y'all give me the authority to sign and declare that test secret here that, of the resolution for the CSRA Unified Development Authority?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Is our second?
Second.
Motion by Henderson, second by Commissioner Anthony Nakas, any discussion on the motion? Chair is none, all in favor of the motion. Let it be known, we say an aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like, sign the motions carried. That's what you do is keep me in line. Because I would head to U.S. County Attorney tonight. That's good. I have another thing that I want to appoint to General Government Committee. And we will be getting with you, that's chaired by Commissioner Tankersley and Commissioner Anthony Nakas serves on the General Government Committee, and we are doing some, we're in some pretty good discussions with, with work at nine-one-one communication. So I will be asking this, this, the, uh, same thing as that, I think, Director Doss, Director Acock, Director Seymour, and Director Broom. I forget who's on it, but they'll be meeting with y'all. I'm familiar with it. Go through the committee. Y'all will make a recommendation, recommendation, go put a full board to, to vote on when it comes time to vote. This will probably be another month deal. I'm going to ask Director Seymour, if you will, or Clerk McKell, contact these two and y'all get this meeting rolling. I won't be at that meeting. Y'all will. I can't go, makes free if I go. But they'll let me know what y'all doing. Okay, I say a motion to adjourn.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Tankersley, second by Commissioner Anthony Nakas to adjourn, any discussion on the motion? Chair is none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known, we say an aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like, sign, and the motion is carried. We stand adjourned.